I'd like to call, to order the special board meeting of Joliet Junior College just at 5:25 on Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. Joan, would you call a roll, please?
Yes, I do want to say hi. Broderick?
Present.
Garcia-Guian?
Here.
Mahalik?
Present.
Morales?
Here.
O'Connell?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
Lozano?
Here.
And Wanderlyk?
Here.
Secretary is here. Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Betty Washington, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Betty.
You're welcome.
Item 2.0, public comments. Do we have any public comments, Ms. Tierney?
Chairman Wanderlyk, I would like to ask Representative Larry Walsh Jr. to address you this evening. So Representative Walsh.
Hello, Larry. Hello, everyone. How was everyone doing today?
Good.
Great. Thank you.
Sorry I can't be there with you, but I'm down in Springfield doing the business of the district down here. But I was asked to join you. I think today is a very special day for one individual that has put his heart and soul into this junior college. And I'm under the understanding that he may be retiring from the board as of tonight. And so we put together a resolution honoring President Bob Wanderlyk for his years of service. So I introduced House Resolution 239, and I'm going to go through all the whereas's and therefor's, but bear with me. Whereas Robert Wanderlyk has served on the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees for 44 years, from 1977 to 2021. And whereas Robert Wanderlyk has been a continuous advocate for Joliet Junior College and the Illinois Community College System through his leadership and service. And whereas Robert Wanderlyk led the efforts to transform facilities across the college by providing expertise, planning, and support, particularly for the 2008 through 2013 master plan, and by spending 20 years chairing the board's Buildings and Grounds Committee. And whereas the 2008 to 2013 master plan constructed seven new buildings and renovations, including the greenhouse, the campus center, the Health Professions Center, the Natural Sciences renovation, the Automotive Tech renovation, the Facility Services Building, and the City Center Campus, this period of time represents the most sweeping physical changes to the college in its history. And whereas in 2018, Robert Wanderlyk was recognized for his commitment to Joliet Junior College with the Susan H. Wood Award for the Joliet Junior College Foundation. And whereas Robert Wanderlyk is one of only six trustees in Illinois Community College history who has served more than 40 years on their local community college board. And whereas Robert Wanderlyk has demonstrated a strong and unwavering commitment to his community and higher education in the state of Illinois. Therefore, be resolved by the House of Representatives of the 102nd General Assembly of the State of Illinois that we commend Robert Wanderlyk for his over four decades of service on the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Wanderlyk as a symbol of our esteem and respect. And I do mean that, our esteem and respect. Bob, you've done a tremendous job, and I've been glad to call you a friend over the years that I have been in office. And I want to just wish you the best in retirement, and I'm sure I'll probably see you around town sometime. But again, congratulations, Bob, on 44 years of serving the community. You're well-respected.
Well, thank you very much, Larry. Now, how much do I have to contribute to your campaign fund now?
We can talk about that later, Bob, but...
Thank you very much. It's deeply appreciated.
Did you get your copy?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
All right. Well, you guys have a great evening. And again, Bob, congratulations, and you and Marty, I hope enjoy your retirement, so...
Thanks, Larry.
All right, guys, I got to run. I got more meetings. But have a great meeting, and thanks for the time today.
All right. Bye now. Ooh, well, that was a surprise. Okay, with that being out of the way, item 3.0, approval of election results. And to confirm the election results, the board chair reports vote totals are to be accurate and declares winners and term of office for the six-year terms as Michelle Lee and James Buzinski, and the four-year term, Maureen Broderick. Can I have a motion to accept the results of the election?
So move.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Joan, call a roll, please.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Broderick?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
And Wanderlyk?
Yes. Let's see. That's it. Moving on, item 4.1, plaque given to the trustees leaving the board. And I have one here for Ms. Betty Washington. And Betty, could you come up here with me, please? Joliet Junior College honoring Betty Washington in recognition of her exemplary support, service, and dedication to the students, employees, and community of Joliet Junior College, March 2020 to April 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you, Bob.
If you care to say a few words, whatever you want.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. It's been an experience, and I wish everyone well as you move forward, with always remembering the students are at the forefront. And I'm still in the community, so anything I can do, don't hesitate to reach out. And thanks again.
Party. I know that this also goes to you as an award for allowing Robert to serve 44 years on our board. And with that, I think we should bring up our trusted trustee, Mr. Robert Wanderlyk, up here. Mr. Wanderlyk, please, could you come up?
Thanks, Maureen. I'm going to miss you a lot, by the way.
I'm going to miss you, too.
You're a lot of fun, and you're very bright, and I'm sure the board will succeed with you on board.
Don't worry, I'll keep texting Bob that whole time.
Good.
Oh, the hurricanes will keep coming, right, Mr. O'Connell? Where's Mr. Mike O'Connell? Are you there? All right. This is in honor of Robert J. Wanderlyk, in recognition of her, I think it's his, exemplary support, service, and dedication to the students, employees, and community of Joliet Junior College. So I think they have to do a little bit of erasing on the "her" and make it a "his." Did you confuse him those 44 years?
It'd be simpler than changing his gender.
That would be, that would be.
I can go in either bathroom now.
You could. I mean, we got a "her," so I'm going to give you this.
Thank you.
And we also have this in recognition of your outstanding leadership as the chairman of Joliet Junior College from 2015 to 2021. But what your wife holds, which is something that's very, very special, is a gold gavel that we're going to give to her to allow you to have. And this is for Robert, for all of your wonderful service at JJC.
Whoa.
Oh, nice.
Can you find nails with that?
She cannot beat it. Marty's in charge.
Wow.
Isn't that beautiful?
Oh, my gosh.
And it's got his name on it.
It weighs like it's real gold.
And it's got his name on it.
Does.
Yes. Aren't you impressed? Excited? You don't want to bang it for your last time? When we sign and die, you could do it for the last meeting.
Oh, it is there.
So Bob, Mike O'Connell, a former board member, would like to take a picture of you and Marty, too.
Okay, maybe I could take the mask off, huh?
Yeah, take the mask down.
I probably better with the mask on.
Thank you, Michael. And just to say a few words, and thank you, John Boza, for coming here. John is the husband of former trustee Eleanor McGowan-Boza, who was a very good friend of Joliet Junior College, a friend of mine. I don't know what to say, because obviously my ghostwriter didn't write anything for me.
Where is she? She's behind you.
But there's a few things that I'd like to say. You know, I'd like to thank my family and my wife for supporting me for all these years. Two of the best things I ever did, well, I did like a million of them, but two of the best things I ever did was to hire Dr. Mitchell as president and to hire Joan Tierney as my secretary. Two best things I've done. And I'm sure the college is going to be in good hands with Maureen and Jim and the rest of the trustees, obviously. And Betty's going to be deep in touch. You'll see someplace sometime. And thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. It's been a, it's a family here, 44 years. Don't leave.
Nope, there's still more.
So you mentioned Mr. Boza. So for everyone to know, Eleanor McGowan-Boza was a retired trustee from Joliet Junior College. In the year 2001, it marked two JJC milestones for Eleanor, the completion of her 12th year on his Board of Trustees, and her receipt of two associate degrees in law enforcement and criminal justice. During her two terms in office, she chaired the JJC board and strengthened the college's relationship with its constituents. She also served as the treasurer of ICCTA, as chair of the Association's South Suburban Region, and as chair of the Minority Affairs Committee, where she encouraged trustees to think first of those traditionally underserved by higher education. Mr. Boza is here with us this evening and asks that he be allowed to give you a remembrance of your years together with Eleanor in serving on the boards. Mr. Boza?
Look at this. Holy moly. Remarkable. Thank you, John. Thank you, Eleanor. That's... Yeah, okay. Yes, it is. Beautiful.
So I also wanted to say a few words to give our board chair a heartfelt farewell as he ends this chapter of his life. The college celebrates 120 years in 2021. Alongside that amazing historical milestone, we are celebrating the retirement of one of the longest-serving community college trustees in the state of Illinois and really across the country, Mr. Bob Wanderlyk. Bob has served on the JJC board for 44 years. Let me put this into perspective. Each trustee term is six years. To be a successful trustee, these positions require significant time investment, multiple meetings per month, conferences, meeting attendance, and community engagement. Trustees are elected and receive no compensation. They vote on critical issues impacting the college, supporting budget and financial choices, academic programming, and so much more. So that's not solid gold, because we do watch the budget, just so you know. Bob has served as the JJC Board of Trustees chairman on multiple occasions throughout his 44 years, including this past term. In addition to naming the new pedestrian walkway on the north side of the city center campus building after Chairman Wanderlyk, we are also going to present and share with him this evening the plaque that will be hung and displayed in the formal boardroom, and it says, "In recognition and profound appreciation of 44 years of distinguished service to trustee Robert J. Wanderlyk, 1977 to 2021." Remember, Bob, this isn't a farewell, and it's not certainly a goodbye. We congratulate you.
Thank you very much. What do you mean it's not solid gold? You could take it out of my travel budget.
That I could have. I didn't think about that. I absolutely could have.
Oh, thank you, everybody, for everything you've done over the past, as long as I've known you. Tom? I appreciate everything. So, being said, item 5.0, turn, may die, obviously.
Second.
Joan, call a roll, please, for the last time.
Aye.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
And Wanderlyk?
Yes.
So next, 6.0, convening of the new board. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of chairman.
Have to swear in a new?
Oh, sorry. New elected trustees come to the board table, also the president's position?
Yeah, you do it.
Swearing in. Michelle and Jim?
Attorney Buck, is it one at a time, or?
No, they can all be sworn together.
Okay. First, I'd like to welcome all of you. Congratulations. How free, I'm excited. So if you raise your right hand and state your name. Aye?
Aye. Moshiney.
Aye. Do solemnly swear affirm
Do solemnly swear affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of Illinois
and the Constitution of the state of Illinois
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of the member of the Board of Trustees
of the office of the member of the Board of Trustees
of Joliet Junior College, Illinois Community College District 525
of Joliet Junior College, Illinois Community College District 525
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
Congratulations. Who knew that this was going to like, be like a thing when the kids started doing it. Do we have the pen, Jim? We need to sign now.
Here. Michelle.
Okay, I'd like to, Joan, call roll.
Broderick?
Present.
Buzinski?
Present.
Garcia-Guian?
Present.
Lee?
Present.
Lozano?
Here.
Mahalik?
Present.
Morales?
Here.
And O'Connell?
Here.
Next on the agenda is item number 9.1, election of the chairman. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of chair. Would any trustee like to?
Trustee Buzinski, I'd like to nominate Maureen Broderick for the office of chair of the board.
I'd like to nominate Dan O'Connell for chair of the board.
Any other nominations? Okay, if there are no further nominations, I will entertain a motion to close nominations.
Motion.
Second.
Joan?
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Broderick?
Yes.
Buzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Lozano?
Yes.
Attorney Buck, I'll just defer to you effects. So I have, the first nomination was made by trustee Buzinski for trustee Broderick.
So that nomination is called for a vote, and there's a roll call vote taken on that nomination.
Okay. So call for a vote.
Broderick?
Pass.
Buzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
No.
Mahalik?
No.
Morales?
Pass.
O'Connell?
No.
Broderick?
Pass.
Morales?
No.
Broderick?
Yes.
Okay, so what were the numbers?
That nomination fails, three to four.
Okay. Okay. The next nomination was for that of trustee Dan O'Connell by trustee Mahalik.
Broderick?
No.
Buzinski?
Pass.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
Pass.
I'm sorry?
Pass.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Buzinski?
No.
And Lee?
I abstain.
That nomination passes four to two.
Okay, so then I entertain a motion to approve trustee O'Connell as chair of the Board of Trustees.
Motion.
Second.
Joan, call roll.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Broderick?
Yes.
Buzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Broderick?
She said yes.
She voted yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it passed. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, next, item 9.2, election of vice chair. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of vice chair.
Madam President, I would like to nominate trustee Morales for the office of vice chair of the board.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Maureen Broderick, trustee Broderick, for the vice chair position.
I'd like to nominate Jake Mahalik, Madam Chairman.
Any other? Okay, if there are no further nominations, I will entertain a motion to close nominations.
So move.
Second.
Joan, call roll.
Broderick?
Pass.
I'm sorry, you said pass?
I passed.
Buzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
For roll call?
This is approving the motion to close the nominations for vice chair.
Yes. Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Broderick?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Tierney, the first nomination from trustee Garcia was for trustee Morales.
For vice chair?
For vice chair.
Broderick?
Pass.
Buzinski?
Pass.
Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Pass.
Morales?
Of course, yes.
O'Connell?
I'll pass.
Broderick?
Pass.
Buzinski?
No.
Mahalik?
No.
O'Connell?
No.
Broderick?
No. That nomination fails, two to five.
I move to the next, correct, Carl?
Yep.
Okay. The next nomination by trustee Buzinski was for trustee Broderick.
Broderick?
Pass.
Buzinski?
Yes.
Garcia-Guian?
No.
Lee?
Pass.
Lozano?
No.
Mahalik?
No.
Morales?
Pass.
O'Connell?
No.
Broderick?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano said no. Okay, Morales.
What's the current vote, Joan?
Three to three.
Oh, no pressure, huh? This is for trustee Broderick to maintain her vice chair seat?
Correct.
Correct. We have the nomination for trustee Mahalik next.
Yeah. Well, I know we agreed, we disagree on a lot of things. There's always room for improvement. I think I would have liked to have gotten the vote, but I didn't. So it's okay. I'm still a leader. Attorney Carl?
Yes.
I can abstain?
Yes.
And what's the next step if I abstain?
Then it does not pass, because it's tied three to three.
And then we move on to?
Trustee Mahalik.
Trustee Mahalik?
On his nomination for vice chair, that's correct.
Maureen, do you agree to work with me and get along better on this board and be a better servant leader to our community and our students?
You got it.
I know we've had a lot of issues, and I want to see that we can work together.
And I made that commitment to you.
I understand. I think you have a lot of knowledge. I think you bring a lot to the table. I know we make mistakes, but I would like to see us work together in unity for the betterment of our students and the entire overall community and the faculty and the staff.
I agree 100%.
I think we have great board members here. I think Jake, I respect you, and every single one, and Chairman Wanderlick, everybody. But our leadership, I think, is important, that is very well represented with experienced people, with a mix of, you know, male, female, leading our, our college. So having said that, I want to extend an olive branch to you as well, and I'm gonna give you my support.
Thank you.
So I vote yes.
That nomination passes four to three.
So do I move to trustee Mahalik?
You can, but the vote, presumably the vote's gonna be the same.
It's gonna be three to four.
The opposite direction. So it's gonna be three to four, the opposite way.
Okay, so we don't have to move that?
That's up to trustee Mahalik. If you'd like a call on your nomination, you're entitled to it. If you want to withdraw your nomination, you're entitled to do that as well.
Call on it, just to see.
Call the vote.
Okay. Okay, next, the next nomination, it was made by trustee O'Connell to recommend trustee Mahalik for vice chair. Broderick?
We're voting on Mahalik, though?
Correct.
No.
Budzinski?
No.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Pass.
You said yes, trustee Mahalik?
She said pass.
Pass. And O'Connell?
Yes.
Morales?
It's okay. You don't have to worry about it, so.
This is really bad. I hate this.
It, it, no, I got no grudges on this.
I appreciate that. I, I do appreciate that.
This is, this is just business. This is, this is a corporate setting.
This is, this is, but like I said, you know, I don't, I don't like to play politics.
Don't, don't hold back from me.
No, no, no. Like I said, I respect everybody. I, I do think we all, you know, I think trustee Broderick is very active with, she does a lot when it comes to the board. Are any of us perfect? No. But do we need to all learn to work together better? I've never had a parent in any political setting, I don't, I'd be the first in my family to be on this college board, to graduate from this school. It would have been an honor to have the vice chair. I didn't get it, it's okay, but I'm gonna continue to work hard. But I do see that, you know, trustee Broderick has a lot of talent, a lot of skills, and a lot of room for improvement, and she's willing to take it and own it. And we want to work better together, so I'm gonna vote no.
That nomination fails three to four. Trustee Broderick is elected to vice chair.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve trustee Broderick as vice chair of the Board of Trustees.
Motion.
Second.
Joan, call roll. Broderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
And O'Connell?
Yes.
Next item, 9.3, election of secretary. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of secretary.
I'd like to, Madam President, I'd like to nominate trustee Garcia Guillen for the position of secretary.
I would like to nominate Jake Mahalik.
Just did the nomination.
I did.
Who did?
I did for Jake.
And it was for who?
Jake.
Jake.
Any, no other nominations? Okay, if there are no further nominations, I will entertain a motion to close nominations. Joan?
Motion.
Second.
Broderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Aye.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
And O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay, the first trustee Garcia Guillen was nominated by trustee Morales for secretary?
Yes.
Oh, she did.
Broderick?
Pass.
Budzinski?
Pass.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
And O'Connell?
Yes.
Broderick?
Yes.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Broderick?
You already took mine.
It would go back to me.
You passed both times.
Huh?
You passed both times. It's to you, you're the last vote.
I didn't pass the last time, I said yes.
Oh, it sounded like you said pass.
Yeah, I heard pass, too. I'm sorry, no, I said yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That nomination passes six to one.
So trustee...
You might as well run it back. It's okay. I'm a big boy, if I lose, it's, it's okay. I'm still gonna commit to the board, so.
Okay, okay. So...
We love you, Jake.
All right, it's okay.
Next, the nomination for trustee...